Okay, do we think we've got everybody Cindy?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, let's go ahead then and call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 20-24 to order Cindy roll call please.
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
If.
Soroka?
Let me proceed to read the COVID-19 information statement due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions allowed, per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. Having read that, I would want to welcome everyone that is with us this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up. If you're not here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. Cindy, can you tell if we have members of the public that are with us that want to speak on any particular items? I heard you say that we do have our special guests with us this evening, but can you tell whether or not there are others with us as well?
I can't tell specifically, but I would ask that anyone who is in the audience for something not on the agenda to go ahead and raise their hand. It appears they're all here for something, so.
Okay, well, if you are attending this evening and if you are here for something other than our recognition of the Johnson High School Girls Cross Country Team, please let Cindy know what your agenda item is and whether or not you would like to speak. Moving on to the next item, the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, council members, any changes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move Martin.
Second Evans.
We have a motion of second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
If.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, the first item that we have under Public Communications is to recognize the 2020 Johnston High School Girls Cross Country Team for their state championship. I can't see any of them, however, I know they're there and I would just ask, is the head coach Pat Henness with us?
Yes, he is.
Okay, Pat, can you turn your audio on?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Fantastic, you bet, you bet. Why don't you share with us who you have with us this evening?
Well, I think that we have six out of our seven members of the state championship team with us and that would be Bella Haikis, who is a senior, Aliyah Tempest, who is a junior, Olivia Verde, who is a freshman, Ashley Faber, a senior, Sam Strauss, another senior, and Bailey Vaughn, who is a junior, and then the one member of the team who's not with us is Faith Need, who is a junior, and she has a show choir rehearsal tonight, so these are some ladies that are fast and they're also very involved in lots of things at the school and in the community.
Absolutely, I thought maybe Coach you were going to tell me she was still outrunning and she forgot to stop by.
That could be too, yes.
So do you have some of your assistants with you this evening?
Yeah, so we have myself, in terms of the high school staff, it's myself and Chris Seaworth, and we have been coaching together now. I think we figured out that it's been 18 years that we've been coaching together. Yeah, and then we also have Carly Fitzgerald with and and then Michelle Pass and Coach Pass, her son was getting some minor surgery done today and so she wasn't able to make it with us. But, and then we have our two junior high coaches who they're with us all summer and you know, they are extremely important part of our program and that's Jody Bukin and Kayla Lutton.
Great, well, we want to welcome all of you for being with us this evening. You know, it's always fun to do this in person because you can just kind of feel the excitement and enthusiasm in the room from the girls as well as from everyone who works with the girls and support the girls in their efforts and accomplishments, but you know, you know that I couldn't be more proud of what you have done Coach, what your your team has done to get these girls to the place that they are, that you know, they have won now, you know, first place two years in a row and they've, you know, been winners five out of the last seven years. I mean, that is just absolutely incredible. You guys are just doing an amazing job.
Well, we appreciate that and I know that these ladies appreciate all of the support, our team and our coaches, all the support that we get. I was just reflecting on my run this afternoon. I went out and and just the great trails that we have and you know, the foresight that the city has had in terms of providing those those opportunities and making it such a great community for us to run in.
Well, we're doing it for you Coach.
We love it, keep them coming. We love those trails.
Yeah, and Coach, you know this, probably some of your girls know this. I don't know that the council members know this, but but not only do the girls, you know, go out and run and make us all proud in their, you know, in what they do in their cross-country running, but also several times I've seen, the kind of community support that we get from you is incredible as well. Frequently, I've seen you at the Des Moines Marathon at mile 20, which is a tough mile of a marathon. You're there and you're lending support to all of the marathoners in that race as well and I can't tell you how proud and pleased I am to see you at that place in the marathon.
Absolutely, and we are, one of our goals is to provide more opportunities for running and racing once, you know, once we get through our pandemic here and we have a new cross-country course that's going to be opening up at the high school and our goal is next summer to put on the Dragon Dash 5K. And so we will be coming back and probably talking with John and hopefully partnering up the city with the city on that a little bit.
Absolutely, that would be great. And I know that all my colleagues on the city council will be out there with me running. Right guys?
I'll be looking for councilmember Soroka, that's for sure.
There you go. Well, we, again, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for everything that you do in the community and again, keep up the good work, both coaches assistants as well as you young ladies that are with us this evening, you know. Running is a sport that you can do. It's a lifelong sport. You can do it for the rest of your life. You can do it with or without other people and it's just a great way to to stay both physically and mentally fit, so keep up, keep up the good work. You're making us proud.
Thank you Mayor and we'll look for you out on the trails, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, great, thanks.
Thanks all, you bet.
Bye bye.
Now I've lost my agenda. I think the next, here we go. The next item we have is an update on DART. Cindy, I'm guessing we probably have Elizabeth and Russ Trumbull with us this evening?
Yes, we do.
There they are. Welcome Elizabeth and Russ. The floor is yours.
Hi Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to share an update on DART with you this evening. And also Mayor Deerenfeld, we just greatly appreciate your leadership on the DART Commission over the years. You are a great great advocate and just appreciate all the leadership that you bring to the DART Commission. With that, I'm gonna open it up, let Russ provide a few comments before I present.
Yeah, thank you Elizabeth and thank you Mayor Deerenfeld and thank you Council. I would just simply echo what Elizabeth said, you know, having your mayor on the DART Commission. She is just a great member. She's on the Executive Committee as well with me and just does a phenomenal job representing you guys, so thank you Mayor for your service, really appreciate it. So I'm the Chair of DART and I just want to start out by saying thank you to Elizabeth and the DART team. I want to compliment them. DART compared to other like transit agencies across the country is one of the most efficient, effective transit agencies in the country relative to our peers. And Elizabeth and her staff are always working to become more efficient, more effective in everything that we do. Over the last year or so, in the name of efficiency and effectiveness, we've been working hard to implement different initiatives and to better align cost and benefit for our member communities as well. And the Commission and staff have done a lot of heavy lifting. Some initiatives I just want to mention very quickly. First, the Transit Optimization Study. We commissioned a study and hired a consultant to study innovative and creative ways to provide transportation services. And this is involved looking at things like Uber and Lyft and Zip Cars, e-bikes and scooters and a whole host of other modes of transportation to get people from point A to point B. And that study is still underway, but even before we got into the meat of that study, we quickly implemented a Flex Connect Flex Connect Pilot Project, which is a pilot project in the city of Urbandale in a zone that we weren't having a lot of trips in. And what we do there is we've allowed residents in that area to, we've contracted with Uber and Yellow Cab and residents are taken from their home to this bus stop and then from there they can take the bus service wherever they need to go. Doing that allowed us to cut out one bus and one driver and actually repurpose that and use it in another area intro. In addition to the Flex Connect and Transit Optimization Study, we've been right sizing our buses. We've realized that we don't need big gigantic 40-foot buses on all of our routes. And so we've done what we could to try to save a little bit here and a little bit there. And we actually just recently purchased five 30-foot buses instead of 40-foot buses. And doing this, we've saved just a little bit on the gas and we've saved a little bit on the purchase of the bus as well. But having a fleet of over 100 buses, the more we do this, the more we're going to save little by little and it will all add up. Another thing that we've put in place is we have a position review team now at DART. So Elizabeth and her staff will take a look at people that leave through attrition and they'll get together and discuss whether or not we need to hire back and refill that position and if not, we'll just leave the position open. So we've got an ability to save some money and be more efficient and effective there as well. And then last but not least, we've spent a lot of time, and the mayor can tell you this, had a number of meetings on better lining cost and benefit for our member communities based on population and service. And so we've looked at our funding formula and have suggested a change in that funding formula. And again, better align that cost and benefit based on the population of the community and the service that they receive. And Elizabeth's going to go into greater detail on that, so I won't say anything more about that, but we're just working hard to be as efficient, effective as we can and we'll just keep doing that in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth. Elizabeth?
Yep. Cindy, are you able to pull that up?
Can you see it now Elizabeth?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, you can move to the next page. So, thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to present. So tonight I'm just gonna give you a reminder of the DART services that you have in Johnston, provide you an update on our Transit Optimization Study as well as the property tax formula. And then just also an update on the conversations around DART operations and maintenance facility and plans for the future. And then also some of the things that we're planning for as we look to the future. Next slide. So we have three primary services that we offer at DART. The first being our fixed route service, which is your traditional fixed route, local bus service with a schedule and bus stops. Our rideshare service, which is our van pool program and that extends for about 100-mile radius around the metro. And that is geared at bringing people from rural communities to jobs here in the metro as well as taking people who live in the metro out to rural employment sites. And then we also have our paratransit service, which is geared for people who either have a cognitive or a physical disability and can't access any of our other services and need special assistance for mobility. From a service priority standpoint, as we think about new service, we're really geared towards getting people to work to medical appointments and education. And in Johnston, you have Local Route 5 serving the Merle Hay Corridor, your Express Route 93 serving the 86th Street Corridor as well as paratransit service throughout Johnston. Here's a map showing kind of the Route 5. It does serve many, several neighborhoods in Northwest Des Moines and then extends to to Merle Hay Road and serving Johnston up past north of City Hall by the library and some of your residential development north of Northwest 62nd Street. That service was extended a couple of years ago and we've had a really positive response of having that neighborhood service in that northern part of Johnston. Next one. And then also our 93 Express Service, which is focused on the 86th Street Corridor. It also was extended last October to serve the area northwest, north of Northwest 62nd Street and on Northwest 100th Street. And we have seen, pre-COVID, did see quite a bit of ridership growth in the couple of months since that had been implemented and look forward to once we get back to normal times growth in that ridership continuing in that part of Johnston. Next slide. So our Transit Optimization Study is a study that really is geared towards identifying ways to optimize our existing service, finding ways and identifying what our evolving transportation needs of the region are as we look to the future and we continue towards having a million people here in the metro as well as evaluating innovative service delivery models such as microtransit and other first mile, last mile type services and ride hailing such as Uber and Lyft. And then at the end of the day, we hope to develop a long-term vision for DART services. Next. And so what this might look like is substituting some of our, potentially substituting some low productivity routes or routes that we have, have little ridership with other sorts of service models, so whether it's partnering with an Uber or Lyft in that area or DART providing a smaller scale shuttle service that really utilizes technology. Those are different approaches that we could, we could be looking at. Also thinking about how do we best serve the growing areas of the region and kind of where as the region gets bigger in size, not all of those areas will be appropriate for a 40-foot bus and so we want to be nimble and thoughtful in matching those areas and the development and the density with the right type of service. And then we'll also be thinking about how do all of these sorts of transportation modes work together? And thinking about are there areas within the community that several of them are aggregated? Such as if we have bike share or a scooter share in the future, how do those interact with Flex Connect or a partnership with Uber type stops and then along with our regular transit services? And so thinking about are there opportunities to create hubs? And then also making sure that we're not forgetting about our main corridors and providing the best service possible in our key corridors throughout the region. Next service, or next slide. So we have started this study last fall, early winter. It did get delayed with COVID and so we have continued to pick that up here this fall and completing our market analysis and looking at different mobility alternatives. We hope this spring to be able to bring back out or solicit feedback from the general public on current and future mobility needs and then take that feedback and develop recommendations over the course of the summer and then get feedback and take that back out to the public in the summer, early fall with the hopes of being able to bring an integrated mobility plan to the Commission for Approval in the fall of next year. Next slide. Some of the other things that we're working on, Russ also touched on is looking at our 30-foot vehicles and where we might be able to utilize those for service on more routes throughout the metro. We currently introduced five this summer and our hopes are to purchase another 20 of those vehicles over the next five years. We also introduced two weeks ago and put into service our electric buses. We purchased seven of those in partnership with Mid-American Energy earlier this year. They are performing very well in service, even given the cold weather we've seen thus far this winter and so look forward to continuing to monitor and evaluate those vehicles here over the course of the next couple of years to determine if it would be wise for DART to continue to purchase electric vehicles in its fleet. We also introduced last October our Flex Connect Pilot Program, which is a partnership with Yellow Cab and Uber in a zone in Urbandale. We look to, want to look to expand to a second zone in the Urbandale Business Park in the early summer of 2021. And so that will be exciting. And then the Commission in November also approved a reduced fare pilot program that will run from January of 2021 through the end of June. And that really looks to reduce the transportation barriers for those that are experiencing financial hardship. And so what it will do is allow residents in the metro to be able to purchase reduced fare products if they have, are receiving unemployment benefits or food assistance benefits in addition to also doing job training. Next slide. So our Property Tax Formula Initiative has been, we kicked that off last fall with Scott Racker and the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center. Scott facilitated a course of four workshops for the Commission last winter and early spring and really focused on trying to develop principles for the initiative as well as looking at formula options and so want to just provide an update on that. And so DART's budget currently is $36.9 million, just shy of $37 million. Of our revenues, 62.7% come from local property tax or our levy through local property taxes. And then additional 21.3 comes from fares and contracts or revenue that DART generates on its own. And for most transit systems across the country, 20% is the mark that the industry average is 20% for revenues that you are able to generate on your own from fares and contracts. So we are, we are on par with other transit systems. And then the rest of our revenue does come from federal and state dollars along with a few other miscellaneous revenue sources. From an expense standpoint, the bulk of our expenses are putting vehicles in service out on the road every day. And so as you would expect, having a high number of operators and mechanics are number one expenses, salaries, wages and fringes along with services, fuel and lubricants and equipment, repair parts or making sure the vehicles are in good, good working order. Next slide. Here is a run-through of what the different property tax levy rates are for DART with each one of our member communities. They range from 54 cents per thousand in unincorporated Polk County to 95 cents per thousand in Windsor Heights and Johnston is currently at 66 cents per thousand. Next slide. So the goals of the initiative were really to ensure that we're maintaining the regional intent of DART, that DART's member communities can continue to find value in maintaining their membership and that we're able, that there's flexibility in the formula such that DART is able to meet the future needs of the community. Next slide. And so the Commission also established operating values as we work through the process. And the two that I want to highlight is that as they work through the formula that in trying to find consensus, they recognize that the end solution will not likely be a perfect solution for everyone, that there was going to have to be compromise as we work through the process. And that success is coming to agreement on a formula that aligns the cost and benefits to member communities and factors in the importance of regionality and how people travel. Next slide. And so there were seven principles that were established for the formula and the first being that it has long-term viability. Second, that there's predictability. Third, transparency. Fourth, that there's a regional mindset to the formula. Fifth, that there's equity built in. The sixth is ensuring that there's a base level of support. And seventh is that we were thinking creatively about the development of the formula. Next slide. And so there are a variety of formula options that were examined and there were several variations based on each one of these. The first was establishing a flat rate so that every community paid the same property tax levy rate across the community. The second is that there would be a base buy-in of support or a base contract amount and then there would be an increment for the level of service each community receives. The third is that the levy rate would be established based on population. The fourth was that the levy rate would be established based on service tiers. And then the one that most closely aligned and best reflected the principles that the Commission established was the last one. And that is that it handled, provided an allocation to the city of Des Moines based on the shared benefit of service. And then all of the other member communities, the levy rate would be established based on population and service tiers. Next slide. And so here's a graphical description of the formula. You'll see that at the top, there's a, is what is needed for DART from property taxes. So our fiscal year 2021, we're currently collecting 22.46 million from the property tax levy. And then it allocates 49.2% of that 22 million to the city of Des Moines and that 49.2 represents the shared benefit to other communities from the service that exists in Des Moines. Nearly all of the service runs through the city of Des Moines and so, but because of its extension out to other member communities, there is a benefit to some of the costs that is incurred in the city of Des Moines to those other communities. And so we calculated that at 49.2%. So the remaining 50.8% of what's needed from the property tax levy would be allocated to So the remaining fifty point eight percent of what's needed from the property tax levy would be allocated to each member community, fifty percent based on population and fifty percent based on the the level of service that each community receives. And so we created four different tiers of service. The first being an extensive seven day a week service, which the city of West Des Moines falls into. The second tier would be a limited seven day a week service, which Altoona and Windsor Heights fall into. The third is primarily five day a week express service, which Johnston fits into, along with Ankeny, Clive and Urbandale. And then the last tier is having a limited trips, paratransit or mobility on demand. And the communities that fall into that are Bondurant, Grimes, Pleasant Hill and Polk County. Next slide. So this is a shows kind of the, based on the current formula, which is the gray bar, the percent of dollars collected through the property tax levy that come from each member community. And so you'll see that Johnston currently pays four point four percent of that total amount collected from the property tax levy. With the new formula, it would go to two point eight percent. You'll see also that there is a significant increase for the city of Des Moines, going from thirty five point three percent to forty nine point two percent. And then also West Des Moines sees a bit of an increase going from nineteen point five percent to twenty one point six percent. Next slide. And so just to recap how the formula is applied is that we annually through our budget process, we'll determine the total amount that Dart needs from property taxes. We'll allocate that dollar amount to Des Moines based on that forty nine point two percent. And then determine the dollar amount for other communities based on the remaining fifty point eight percent. And then that's allocated fifty percent based on population and fifty percent based on the service tier that that community falls in. We still are constrained with our property tax levy, constrained with a ninety five cent cap. And so any member community that needed to levy above that ninety five cents to meet their commitment to Dart would need to buy it down or or find alternate funds to to meet that commitment. We also, we talked to the city of Des Moines extensively as the commission worked to develop this formula, recognizing the impact that that they were going to see as a result of the change in the formula. And so they did request that the new formula phase in over eight years rather than five years. And that they also, I think there was, it was apparent through the process, the city of Des Moines definitely felt it the most, but I think there's recognition by the rest of the Dart Commission that property taxes and some of the constraints it provides may not be the best long term funding mechanism for Dart as we look to the long term. And so the request to the city of Des Moines was really to start to focus all of Dart's legislative energy as we think about the upcoming legislative session and future legislative sessions on finding another funding source to either replace the property tax levy or supplement it and provide some additional funding diversification for Dart. So it's not totally reliant on property taxes. The city of Des Moines recognized that the formula that the commissions come up with is is incredibly fair and wanted to be able to move that forward. And so recognizing that it's probably going to take multiple legislative sessions to work through some of the the funding issues that they're willing to buy down that property tax levy for the first three years as we work to address the legislative needs. And so here's what it looks like to phase the formula in over eight years. So it would be a kind of a hybrid formula till we get to a hundred percent in twenty twenty nine with using kind of the the current formula or allocation to each community. And then increment every year would be based on the new formula. Next slide. And then lastly, this shows kind of what happens to each community's levy rate under this blended phase in of the formulas. So currently, Johnston is at sixty six cents per thousand. The white bars show what if we were to continue on with the current formula, what the levy rate would and would likely would be estimated at. The purple bars show what the the blended phase in and kind of the ultimate levy rate under the new formula for each community. So again, Johnston's currently at sixty six cents per thousand under the new formula in the eight year period, it would then go below forty cents per thousand. And again, valuations factor into this significantly. So if there's any increases or decreases in valuation, it would impact that that rate on an annual basis. So we are, so the commission has has done its due diligence around the formula. We're in the process of formalizing documentation and doing member community outreach. Hope to have that wrapped up by early January. We have not to date heard any concerns around the new formula. So at this juncture, we're planning to recommend approval of the new formula at the to the commission at their February meeting. Should they approve it, then the new formula would go into effect in that kind of in in conjunction. Sorry, got tongue tied. The new formula would go into effect or we would do that in the development of our FY twenty two budget, which would be certified in March. Any questions on the formula before I provide a brief update on the operations and maintenance facility?
I don't hear any, Elizabeth.
Okay. So just lastly, want to give you a brief update on our operations and maintenance facility. This is a discussion that the commission has been having over the last eighteen months or so. Our existing facility is located eleven hundred Dartway, which is off of behind the BP station off of Southwest Ninth and south of MLK there, just south of downtown. The facility is well over forty years and past its useful life. It's also, we're located in the flood plain. The facility was completely underwater in nineteen ninety three. We took on a lot of water in two thousand eight, but we are regularly under our tunnel system underneath the building is regularly filled with water whenever there is a water event. And you'll see in the the pictures to the left that are is our tunnels underneath the building and all of our mechanical systems run through that tunnel system. That is way that the building was designed and and built. And so given the amount of the age of the mechanical systems, as well as the fact that they have been under submerged underwater multiple times, we need to replace all of those those systems here in the upcoming years. The facility, as we think about the storage barn and and other components of the facility, it's really undersized for the the current day bus. We have over over a hundred garage doors at our existing facility. And currently, our electric buses would not fit through our storage, our main storage barn. So they're both just a little bit too tall and a little bit too wide. And so as we think about the buses of the future, probably not getting smaller from a height and width standpoint, we are going to need to reconstruct that facility in order to to put put buses in it. Next slide. So the commission has been considering over the last year or so, whether it's most prudent to continue to invest in our existing facility or consider building a new facility. The Federal Transit Administration has told us that they are not interested in continuing to invest in our existing facility with discretionary grant dollars. And to put their money where their mouth is, they have granted Dart over seventeen million dollars towards a new facility should the commission decide to move forward with it, with the possibility of additional grant funding. And so the commission is continuing to discuss whether to move forward with design and think about the new facility or continuing to invest in the existing facility. And just wanted to prize you of those conversations since they will be continuing in earnest after the first of the year. Next slide. So as we think about what's next for Dart, you know, we are really working to ensure that we are providing the most efficient and effective service possible to our member communities and in wanting to be as responsive of responsive as possible to our communities. And so we're continuing to find ways to leverage technology and find efficiencies in our service, exploring sustainable funding options, as well as evaluating both our community and rider needs. And as well as examining new mobility options so that we can serve a region that's expected to grow to a million people and do it in the best way possible. So with that, I'll take any questions and just appreciate your time and attention so we can provide a Dart update tonight.
Does the council have any questions for Elizabeth? Elizabeth, I'm not hearing any. I want to thank you and and Russ for joining us this evening. You've covered a lot of material in a very short period of time. I'm certain that as the council and staff think about the information that you shared tonight, they will likely have some questions. And I would just suggest that they can either, you know, get those to me and I can probably respond to many of them. But if not, you know, I can always forward them to you or they could probably contact you directly. Is that correct, Elizabeth?
Whatever works best.
Yeah. Elizabeth does a really nice job of responding to emails. So I would encourage you to reach out to her if you have any questions as well. Before I let you go, I just want to let the council and staff know that Elizabeth, you you do an outstanding job in leading the Dart organization. You know, you run a very lean, efficient operation. We've, you know, you've, you've taken it through some, some very difficult times, particularly with COVID over the last several months. But you always come out on top. So thank you for your leadership and I want to just give a shout out to Russ as well. Out to Russ as well. He has been the chair now of of Dart for less than a year and has just done an amazing job in that role. He works very hard at it and he has really been a good team member, team, team member and support for Elizabeth as well as you know, herding all of us cats. The mayors and the and the council members from the various communities that that meet at the Dart Commission meetings and make sure that Dart continues to go in the right direction. So kudos to both of you. Thanks again for joining this, joining us this evening and and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you for your nice comments, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
I think the next, I've lost my agenda again. My iPad keeps going to sleep on me, but I think next on the agenda is Bravo. And I saw some chat box communication going back and forth between Sally and Cindy. So Sally, are you with us this evening?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I'm glad we got the presentation squared away and I'm going to take just a few minutes of your time to give sort of a state of the arts update about what's happening in greater Des Moines. So thank you all for the opportunity to present and certainly want to appreciate Scott Soroka, who represents the city of Johnston on the Bravo Board. We appreciate his perspective and and leadership and are hopeful about what twenty twenty one is going to bring. So just as a quick reminder, before we get into some of the details about where our community stands, a reminder about Bravo's purpose. You know, certainly we were formed to serve as a centralized grant funder for arts, culture and heritage, but our vision is really much broader. We believe strongly that arts, culture and heritage are tied to every single regional priority that we are working together to tackle. And so we are working to balance our focus on funding, but also leadership beyond grant making to ensure that we're maximizing our impact on things that are critical. Next slide. Thanks. We think this is particularly important. Certainly the grant making is critical, but it's really important to look at it holistically because arts, culture and heritage are a whole part of our region's success. You may or may not be aware that in our last cycle, Bravo supported more than seventy nonprofit organizations through our grant programs. And these organizations are truly essential to the region's well being, not just from a quality of life perspective, but also from an economic impact standpoint. The numbers that you're seeing here are a little bit dated at this point. But based on the data that we have, we know that these arts and culture organizations are driving more than a hundred and eighty five million dollars in annual economic impact, employing more than five thousand people and generating a significant amount in government revenue. For perspective, the year this data was collected, the revenue generated by these organizations was sixteen point eight million. The public revenue in in these organizations was about three and a half million. So the return on investment is significant. And I'm sorry to say that the impact of COVID nineteen has been, has been serious on these organizations. Next slide. It certainly isn't a competition that anyone would want to win, but there was no sector hit harder in the first three months of the pandemic than the leisure and hospitality industry, which includes arts and cultural venues and experiences. Monumental drops in employment and unfortunately, those also tie to revenue losses. Next slide. The financial impact to Iowa is only Iowa's arts and culture organization. These are statewide numbers was thirty eight point seven million. That number's probably been increased over the last few weeks. Ninety seven percent of the organizations reported that they had had to cancel events. Sixty three percent reported that they had modified operating status and more than three point four million people in lost attendance. One of the questions that was asked was how severe you expect the overall financial impact to be? And fifty seven percent responded extremely severe. A statistic you're not seeing on this slide, but we take very seriously is that eight percent of organizations also responded that they were not confident they were going to survive the pandemic. If you think back to that seventy organization number that I gave you, that's five to seven organizations that do not believe they're going to make it through this pandemic. And I'll tell you, I don't know which ones we can afford to lose. It's a pretty, it's a pretty dire situation. Now, I do have to say that there are, despite the major challenges, our arts and culture organizations have stepped up in incredible ways. And it's important that we celebrate as well as recognize the challenges. The the Playhouse, the Des Moines Community Playhouse created drive in theater so that people could still enjoy live theater. Art Force Iowa is an organization that serves some of our most vulnerable young people. They actually realized that very few of their their participants had internet, reliable internet. So they actually created DVDs of their art programs and took DVD players and DVDs out so that those young people could still engage with art and their community. The Botanic Garden shifted their plant sale. They usually have an in person plant sale in the spring. They shifted it to an online plant sale and said they made more money than they've ever made. They may never go back to an in person plant sale. The Des Moines Metro Opera so creatively took last year's season and their longstanding relationship with Iowa PBS and were able to broadcast an entire season of operas all across the state and nationwide. You may have seen that before her death, Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg was corresponding regularly with the Des Moines Metro Opera and was eagerly awaiting the presentation of Billy Budd. The Blank Park Zoo, Science Center and Living History Farms were the first organizations to reopen to in person experiences and operate summer camps. They had zero outbreaks in their summer camp programs thanks to the care and concern they placed on safety. So there is a lot to be concerned about for the future, but there's also a great deal to celebrate as we look forward. Bravo also had to respond in this situation and had less than ideal circumstances. As you may see from this presentation, we were budgeted at a little bit under five million dollars in hotel motel tax revenue. And we actually ended up netting about four million. So that was twenty percent less than we had anticipated. Despite that million dollar shortfall, we still paid one hundred percent of our GC twenty grant commitments. And we actually advanced our quarterly payments. Any organization that wanted a payment sooner was able to get that. We were able to do that in both of our second half payments. And we know that that made a critical difference for a number of the organizations we support. We were also able to invest in capital campaign and project grants and our public art grants to programs that we weren't sure we were going to be able to do. The, that's the good news. The the less good news, a little bit of a challenging news is that we're currently budgeted at two and a half million dollars for twenty twenty one, which is about half of obviously what we had budgeted for FY twenty. So the year is going to look a little bit different. Next slide. So again, covering that FY20 hotel motel tax revenue, we were able to secure a PPP loan, knowing that we were going to have a shortfall. That loan has now been fully forgiven, I'm pleased to say. We also had partial furloughs for 100% of our staff. Just for the record, that was only three people, but we did implement partial furloughs for 100% of our staff over the summer. And unfortunately, we did have to execute a reduction in force. So Bravo is now a staff of just two. The idea being we want to maximize the funds we're able to invest in the organizations we support. We were, in addition, our response includes we're updating our community investment programs. The biggest implication for your community is that we are not going to be able to make payments until April. And that's going to, that's going to affect some of the organizations we support. Another thing that may have impact for the city of Johnston is that we will not be running our public art grant program for Grant Cycle 21. We are focusing instead on the operating grants for the arts organizations that we support. Next slide. Another way that we've responded though, is we've developed this campaign, the Let's Hear It For The Arts campaign. The idea is to create a rallying cry that everyone can get behind to make sure that arts and culture are included in every single recovery measure and every single conversation about how our community is going to reemerge. The next slide shows some of the consistent messages we're hoping that people will use. We will absolutely, this is on our website and we will make sure that you get a copy of this, but these are standard language and calls to action, if you will, that we hope everyone can get behind and use. Our cultural organizations can also share that so that we're speaking with one voice to make sure that arts and culture are lifted up and included as we move forward. I'm happy to take any questions. That is a year's worth of work in 11 slides, but I'm happy to take any questions about how Bravo responded or what 2021 looks like. And simply just want to say again, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and for your continued support. It is so critical and now more than ever, we're so grateful for the dedicated revenue stream and your investment.
Council, have any questions for Sally?
No question. Just wanted to throw in a quick comment as I've had a chance to work with Sally a bit over the past year. And one, I think she's just been doing a phenomenal job in the entire Bravo Arts Board in managing a crazy year. And I know she touched on the presentation, but I think it just goes to show how, you know, fiscally responsible the board's been and Sally's been with Bravo's budget in that, you know, not only were they able to maintain all payments that were already promised, organizations that were planning on those funds for the budgets, the fact that they're actually able to advance quarterly payments, I think, as Sally mentioned, is huge. Also just wanted to note Sally and the exec board of Bravo have been doing really great work on kicking off and continuing efforts relating to diversity and inclusion, both among the makeup of the Bravo Board itself, but also in our grant making, which is really exciting to see. And then also, I know Sally mentioned too, but I think is worth reiterating, you know, at the beginning of the year, the board was talking about actually hiring another person for Bravo. And, you know, we actually ended up having to lay someone off because of the pandemic. And so all of the work, which is way more than two people can do, is following, falling on the work of two people, Sally and Amy. So just major thanks to everything they do, leading a challenging year and what will for sure be another challenging year at least as the recovery turns around. So just wanted to share my thanks for their work.
Mayor, this is Jim, Jim Sand. Let me just make a quick comment. I just want to remind the council and express appreciation for Sally and an organization. Just a year ago that we dedicated the Tree of Life in Terra Park. And Bravo was a major contributor to the piece of art that we were able to acquire and put up. And we know how iconic that's been for not only our citizens today, but for many years to come. And, and all that was due to the efforts of Bravo. And I feel very fortunate to having that organization available and giving us the funding we needed to, to put in a pretty important art piece within our community.
And Sally, before you slip away, I just want to say it's been kind of fun over the last several months to watch how creative the arts and culture community have become in making sure that we continue to enjoy what they have to offer. In fact, last week, I, I, over the weekend, I watched the symphony do their Winterland performance, which was in, in, in the comfort of my own home, on my big TV screen. Who would have ever guessed? And I, you know, I think it really, it's going to change the way we participate in some of those events and activities in the future. And I think, you know, for the good, so that, you know, to the extent that people can enjoy that from their homes, you know, more and more people will have the opportunity to participate. So it's, it's been fun and I look forward to what they, they, what new ideas they have for the future for us. So thanks again, Sally, for all of your hard work and everything you do, do to make sure that, you know, that our quality of life here in the Des Moines Metro area is, is the, you know, of the highest quality it absolutely can be. So thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thanks again, everybody. Happy holidays.
You too. Thank you. With that, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is... Oh, before we move on, Cindy, can you tell if there's anyone else that is with us this evening that would like to make a comment under Public Communications on an item that is not on the agenda?
I do not see anyone indicating such.
Okay. We will move then on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a public hearing still.
We have someone that would like to speak?
No, we have a public hearing.
Oh, I jumped over it. Here we go. We do have a public hearing. And to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1046, an official zoning map amendment for approximately 8.93 acres from AR to R1100 with an over, with, with a overlay. The subject property is located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive, PZK's 20-23. And we'll open this public hearing at eight o'clock.
Clayton Under here this evening. And Cindy, if you want to maybe open up the draft preliminary plat, that'd be a good one to talk off of. What we have tonight is a request to rezone approximately 8.93 acres from AR Agricultural Reserve to R1100 Single Family Residential with the Animal Keeping Overlay Zoning District. If we go to that second page, Cindy, staff is working with the, the applicants on a preliminary plat for the subdivision of this property. That remains under staff review. So this is not the action item tonight, but I'm going to use this as a discussion tool. Generally, what's being proposed to be rezoned would be what's shown as lots one, two, three and four and the adjoining outlot to the west, to the top of lot four there. The remaining areas on the north would remain zoned ag reserve to be split into two 10-acre parcels. The intention here is to subdivide the property for construction of several single-family homes. This property is included in the Thrive 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It's identified with a medium-density residential category and parks and open space category. The medium-density residential is intended to accommodate a mix of uses, generally six to 10 units an acre, which may include single-family detached residential. The parks and open space is intended to reflect areas that would either be accommodated in the public parkland or areas of natural resources such as floodplain or wooded areas that deserve special attention during the development process. On this particular property, there'd be no public parkland. We're really looking at the parks and open space component as the floodplain and the wooded areas along Beaver Creek there. The area that is generally outside the floodplain, the intention on this particular property was to try and concentrate housing to preserve those natural resources. And that's why you see the medium-density designation. The R1100 district, the max density doesn't quite get up there to the six to 10 units an acre, but we did seem to accommodate for single-family uses in the medium-density residential. And the goal of this development is to preserve those natural resources down there with the trees and the floodplain. So staff is confident that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it does leave opportunity for future development of areas of the property at higher densities if desired by the applicant and thus approved by the council.
Adam, or I mean Clayton, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Yes.
So can you just, since you've got this map up here, I'm trying to figure out which lots are part of this rezoning. Because when I, when I looked at the materials before the meeting, this looks just a little bit bigger. So can you walk me through the various lots that are being created?
Yes.
I realize this is a rezoning and not a site plan, but I'm, but it, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling in figuring out what is the scope of the, all the land that's being rezoned. So that's really what I'm trying to figure out, so.
Yes, yeah. So I, I included this as a, for discussion purposes, but what you're looking at, Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, 4, and Outlot, is that Z just in there, Cindy? Yeah, Outlot Z, that is the area to be rezoned. Lots 5 and 6, Outlot Y and Outlot X would remain zoned ag reserve as currently zoned today.
So 5 and 6 and Y and the other are not covered by the rezoning?
That's correct. Yeah, Cindy here just pulled up the rezoning district boundaries on that other attachment.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank, thank you.
Yeah, but that, the preliminary plat certainly helped to give
Yep, yep.
A comprehensive view of what, what's proposed to happen out here on this property. The primary purpose for the rezoning is they are able to get the number of homes on the property that they desire under the ag reserve district. So thus, they would need the rezoning to the R1100 to support the additional homes. And when, when I'm doing my comments, I'll let the applicants or the representative maybe go into some detail on what their intentions are on, on constructing out here on this property.
Clayton, while you're, while you just said the rezoning, can you tell me how many homes per acre will be allowed with the new rezoning?
Yes, so the, within the area to be zoned R1100, the maximum density is 1.94 units an acre. In the area that would remain ag reserve, it'd be one home per 10 acres.
So that Lot 1, which is 2.57...
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. But basically Lot 1 basically stays the same as one, one home. And you're saying that it's one home per one point, what did you say, nine acres?
1.94 units per acre or one home per lot. So here, they'd be showing it that there'd be... So there'd be two homes there. One, Lot 1 would have one home, Lot 2 would have one home. Now, it could be further subdivided in the future or rezoned in the future to a higher density. But what they're showing is one home per lot. So they're showing six homes.
Okay, thank you very much.
This proposal does include the Animal Keeping Overlay Zoning District in those areas, R1100. The intention there is for personal animal keeping, not commercial animal keeping, generally consistent with hobby farm type uses. Animal keeping is also allowed in the ag reserve zoning district, so the entire area would be eligible for animal keeping. Adjacent land uses to the north opposite Beaver Creek, that those properties remain in unincorporated Polk County and they're used for single-family residential uses. To the east, which is the bottom of the screen there, that is owned by United States of America, used by Camp Dodge. It is important to note that the properties could experience noise, dust, other disturbances just created by active military training activities. So it's a buyer beware situation. They are there first. To the south, you got some single-family homes along the south side of Northwest Towner Drive, as well as Beaver Creek Golf Course. It is Beaver Creek Golf Course is in, in the city of Johnston and it's intended to be redeveloped at some point in the future as an employment base for the community. No active development proposals are submitted or known at this time there, but we will likely be seeing that redevelop at some point. And then finally, on the north side of Towner Drive, there's also some single-family homes, which are shown for medium-density residential redevelopment in the comprehensive plan. Backing up to the comprehensive plan, we do also show a north-south roadway from Northwest Towner Drive through this property across Beaver Creek connecting up to the intersection of 110th Court and Northwest Road Drive, which is just off the page here on the right-hand side. While the exact need for this road is probably not necessary at this time, when it comes time to the preliminary plating, we do want to make sure we're taking that into consideration. The zoning change itself would not prohibit the ability of that in the future. So staff is working with the, the applicants there to make sure we're reserving enough ability should, should that road be needed in the future. Regarding utilities to service the property, there's currently no sanitary sewer available, so homes would have to be on septic system. This is in an area that would be able to be served by the future City of Johnston Sewer, which is under design but not yet constructed. It is within the area of the Xenia Rural Water District litigation with timeframe unknown on resolution there. So water service remains a bit in the air until we get some resolution there. And then as for storm sewer, there's currently no storm sewer, so all that water would be addressed through overland flowage. This item has gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have recommended approval and notice has been provided pursuant to Iowa code and no public comments have been received to date. I'd be happy to go into detail or answer any questions if you have them. And I do show the applicants, Adam and Ben, and their representative Eric Cannon on the call this evening should they wish to add anything or you have questions of them. With that, I'll finish up my comments.
Council have questions for Clayton? Or the applicants? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anybody who is with us that would like to make any comments? Cindy, are we seeing anyone?
I'm seeing no one.
Well, if there are no questions or comments, council, we will close the public hearing then at 8:11. Is there a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1046?
Overapproval, Coop.
Second, Martin.
Motion and a second, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
Second, Scott.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 8A, consider third and final reading of ordinance number 1044 and ordinance amending the Johnson Revised Ordinance of 2007 by amending Chapter 90 to modify operation of curb valve and hydrants and hydrants and to adopt and publish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There have been no public comments received to date and no changes to the ordinance at this time.
Council, have any questions for?
Matt, sorry.
Matt? Hearing none. Do we have a motion approved? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance number 1044 and to adopt and publish?
I move.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Smoka?
Yes.
Co? Co? Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Co?
Thomas, there he is. Oops, Tom, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, my bad.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 8B, consider policy regarding City of Johnson debris management policy.
Jim Sanderson, this is the policy that we use when we, to, to guide our management of storm debris. With this year's three storms that we had to provide some level of service to, it seemed like a good time to go ahead and update the, the policy. We have had several conversations with the ad hoc group to talk about some of the items that are listed in the policy. I'm, I'm going to focus on, there's really two parts to the policy. One part is the vegetative debris policy. And, and that is actually more of a metro wide policy. The, the part I want to focus on tonight is the Johnson debris management policy. And you can see by the red lines, there's a lot of changes with this. And really it's, it's just more updating it with what we're, what we're dealing with today. Whether we implement this policy is really considered on a case by case basis. So when we have a storm event, there's an assessment to see how much damage is across the community. And we will identify the area that has received damage that would, that would cause us to, to do some debris removal. In some cases, it's the whole entire community, the, the three events we had this summer, the first two events were a, a smaller area that were damaged significantly during the storm. And then the third event was really more of a community wide event. So, so we, we implement this policy as necessary to help our citizens with debris removal when we have significant storm events. The, this policy also establishes guidelines as far as who's responsible. And primarily most often when we have storm events, the, the property owner is responsible for the collection and of the storm debris and, and making sure that it gets dealt with. And in most cases, they use the Metro Waste Authority Curbit Program. If, if storm damage happens on city property, which includes street trees along the roadway, that's when the city will step in and clean that debris up. Or when the debris falls across the street, we get that off the street and, and then follow through with whatever debris removal we need to have. The other thing we tried to address with this is that we, with the Curbits, Curbit program and the City of Johnston program, both for if we have a drop off event or if we do a curb site, each of those different cleanups had different guidelines. And so what we've tried to do is clean that up with this policy as well and, and be more consistent. So when we talk about the length of branches that can be picked up or taken to a drop off site, we try to be much more consistent with this policy update. And, and then we also, one of the main issues that, that really came up during these events this year was currently, or in the past, we've only provided service to single and two family homes. And with the events we had this year, it was questioned on why the city doesn't pick up condominium and townhomes. The, the thought or the, the concern was that they pay property taxes. Most of them are owner occupied. And they should get the same benefit that the other residential property taxpayers pay. And so we took a look at that. We talked about it several times with the ad hoc group. And we decided to include townhomes and condominiums in this policy. So that in future events, if we decide to do any type of a cleanup, those single family or, or multifamily properties would be included. And we, within this, we have guidelines that they would need to bring the debris out to a public street. So that our staff can pick up the debris along the public streets. So, so anyway, quite a few updates with this. I gave it to you in the red line form. Plus I also did a, a clean one as well because sometimes it's easier to read through the changes that are being proposed. But with this, I would take any questions the council may have and would ask the council would consider approving the policy. And that this will be our policy going forward when we have storm events in the future.
Council have any questions for Jim?
I just, I guess, like to pipe in, I, I, I think the change for the townhome associations, home makes sense that, you know, both Jim and I participated in a meeting with some citizens in the, in the original Green Meadows neighborhood who lived in a townhome association, who, you know, I think was after the Deratio event, felt that it was sort of bizarre event where the city was picking up debris on one side of them and the other side, but not picking up their debris, causing some sort of challenges for their neighborhood. So I think this change in policy is, is a, is a good move and I would support it.
Jim, I was involved in the discussions on the proposed changes. I'm not seeing where we wrote in that the townhome associations would need to take it to a a, a street where the trucks can, can drive by and pick it up. I'm not seeing.
It's right there in the middle of the page where it says residence in, in black letter.
So we'll be required to place the debris at the curb or within the right of way. So couldn't that be right out in front of their home?
Most of the roads within townhome and condominium complexes are private drives. And so the, the roads that typically go in and service their, a garages are typically private drives. So requesting that they take it to the public road, which will be, you know, for example, we have quite a few associations along Greendale Road. So they need to bring the debris out to Greendale Road. All the roads that go off of Greendale are private drives.
And I understand that's the intent. I'm not sure that statement is very clear in, in requiring that.
Yes, Mayor, I think what we need to do is strike the orr. So it would just place the tree debris at curb within the public right of way.
That would be better. Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a good change.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the policy regarding the City of Johnson debris management?
Move approval cope.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Smoka?
Motion passed.
Sorry, just a quick question. That includes the mayor's suggestion, the change, right? Just
I, I, we noted that.
Okay, great. Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Soroka. Moving on to item 8D, consider the following items related to the proposed rezoning of approximately 4.49 acres and adjoining right of way.
Mayor?
Yes.
HC.
Pardon?
HC is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item HC, consider resolution number 20 dash 316 approving town center marketing and ending purchase and development deadlines.
Good evening. This is Dave covering for Adam tonight. As council is aware, we've got an existing development agreement with Hanson in place that dates back to October of 2019. We did do an amendment to that in October of 2020 to extend some dates of sort of the first phase property purchase and building completion dates. And also requiring a, the need to submit a marketing plan before the first of December. That amendment allowed for a, a six month extension of those deadlines by mutual agreement. And so what's before you tonight is the marketing plan that was submitted by Hanson. And I know Troy Hanson, I believe is on, can, can speak to that. And also the suggestion with the resolution that we would extend those dates. First phase property purchase to June 1, 2021 and completion by April 30th, 2022. So be happy to answer any questions on that. Obviously it's, both of these are related to some of the market conditions as a result of, of COVID. And as I mentioned, Troy is on as well and can answer specific questions related to the marketing plan that they have put together for marketing the town center.
Council have any questions for David? Or for Troy? Wow, David, we should have you present Adam's items all the time.
Yeah, no kidding.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a quick question for, for Troy Hanson.
Okay.
So Troy, I'm reviewing your, kind of the marketing document that's Johnson Town Center and kind of looking at the page, it's current prospect conversations updated. All of that looks, looks good. I mean, I, I know this is a challenging time. I guess the only question I would have or thought or suggestion would be, I noticed that you had a nail salon listed here. I, I am sort of in shock that we, our community could still need another nail salon. So, you know, just, just say, just point that out for, for whatever effect that has. But anyway, certainly very excited about some of the other types of activities you've got going on here. I think clearly we're wanting to have the town center be, you know, draw some unique and new types of businesses that maybe aren't currently as prominent in our community. But I'm so excited about some of the other things you got going on there, but just, but maybe not quite as excited about the potential for another nail salon. But I know there is demand for those. So anyway, just wanted to pass that along.
Understood.
Other questions or comments? Not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20 dash 316?
Move approval cope.
Second, Evan.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Smoka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8D, consider the following items related to the proposed rezoning of approximately 4.49 acres and adjoining right of way at 5605 Northwest 100th Street. Second reading of ordinance number 1045 amend in the, amending the official amending the official zoning map, changing properties owned IC Industrial Commerce Park to M1 Light Industrial District. Waive third reading of ordinance number 1045 and adopt and publish the same per request of the applicant.
Aaron Wolf, Community Development. This is the second reading and there's been no changes since the first. Again, this is for rezoning property in the West Park PUD from IC Industrial Commerce Park District to M1 Light Industrial District. The applicant has requested the council consider waiving the third reading and to adopt and publish the ordinance. And while waiving a third reading on a rezoning is not typical practice, in this instance, it's not completely absurd because the zoning change is, is limited to outdoor storage only. And we've received no public comment. I don't have access, I don't think, to the attendees tonight. I don't know who's attending this meeting. I'm hoping there's somebody representing the applicant. If you, you should have questions for them. Otherwise I'm able to answer any questions you might have for me about this rezoning.
Aaron, a question I would have is, not that I'm opposed to it, but is there some urgency around the effectiveness, effectiveness of this and the reason why we're being asked to waive the third reading?
I asked the applicant to submit to me an email explaining the urgency and they did. And it, it, I don't think there's a extreme urgency to waive the third reading, but I would defer to the applicant if they're with us tonight.
Yeah, this is, guys, this is Marcus Pitts talking. I think the, you know, the urgency from a financial standpoint is we purchased this building beginning of the year. We got hit with COVID. We got hit with, you know, a tenant that was now financially insolvent. Now we're trying to sell the building here to American Fence. And, you know, every, every day that it's, it's been a, it's been a roller coaster. But every, you know, every day that goes by, it just costs us more to sit on a vacant property. So the sooner we can get this pushed through, if there's no other changes, you know, hopefully the better for everybody, the buyer, the seller, the city, et cetera, et cetera.
So you do have, you do have a buyer of this property.
Correct. I'm the seller. So I, I'm the owner, mayor, and then the buyer is American Fence. Then that's the one that's presented the site plan and, and the other supporting documentation.
And they're just waiting for this action to be taken so that
Correct. And then we can proceed to close.
Okay. Okay. Does council have any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1045?
So move cope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Smoka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
And do we have a motion to approve third reading of ordinance number 1045 and to adopt and publish?
So move cope.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second Cindy vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Smoka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 8E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,697,374.68. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval cope.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Smoka?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. You have one?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, I have three things I just want to highlight real quick. Just some things that have happened within the last couple of weeks since our last council meeting. First of all, as you may recall, we, there was a lot of conversation prior to COVID in discussing the regional water with Des Moines Water Works and, and other, other communities that would be served by the regional water. And we had a series of meetings up to around February of 2020. And when COVID hits, the meetings with these large, larger group, which included all the communities basically came to a, a standstill. But during the COVID, since March of 2020, the, the, the large, the main group of Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works and Urbandale Water Works have continued to meet. They've had over a dozen meetings since March to talk about what a regional water system would look like and, and some of the issues and, you know, that they need to address before we, before a regional water system is, is considered by the, by the other communities. And so what happened last week, they provided an update to everybody, the larger group. It appears they are making some progress and addressing each of the issues that they, that they has become, has been identified throughout this process. And so I just want to let the council know. And so I just want to let the council know that that this group has continued to meet in a in a larger or smaller scale. And they are ready to eventually bring back a proposal. They've got several additional meetings that are that are proposed for the spring. But they do understand there's a sense of urgency around this issue. And and so they want to continue with their conversations and then they'll bring it back to the larger group for discussion and and potential consideration from councils later on. So just want to let you know this this conversation is continuing and we'll hear more about it after the first of the year. The other item relates to the Central Iowa Water Trails. And there's been a group that has been meeting to discuss the whole water trail initiative, which includes, you know, as as you're aware, we have two access points to Beaver Creek. Now altogether, there's about eighty one access points that are being discussed. Two different water tributaries from the Duane River and Raccoon River throughout the metro area. And so there's a group that's the meeting to talk about what the governance of that would look like in in addressing some of the issues and making sure there's some consistency on how we manage our assets going forward. And so there's a there's been a group again with a series of meetings. Actually, Mayor Derenfeld participated in the last meeting we had. After the first year, there will be a a twenty eight E agreement and some bylaws that are going to be proposed by the group in trying to organize the the Iowa Central Iowa Water Trails Organization, which will have a board of directors, which we would participate in and and but it will basically, again, provide some consistency and some governance over this initiative for all the the water trails that are being constructed around or water trails and access points that are being constructed around the metro area. So again, more to come on that issue, but I just wanted to give you guys a a heads up on that. And then just one final thing I had for this evening is I I've received probably about fifteen or eighteen emails related to climate change, the committee and and encouraging the community to do the emission study related to the climate change. And so I haven't shared those with the council yet. I didn't want to send fifteen or eighteen emails or forward them to you. So I'm going to create one email that'll have all the the copies of all the emails that we received so far. And because this conversation will continue when we have our second strategic planning meeting on January fifth. And so I want to make sure you all have the feedback we've gotten from citizens and I will put that together. And I get that to you hopefully, if not by the end of this week, by the first part of next week. So you'll have that information going into the conversation as we continue discussion about that at the January fifth strategic planning session. But that's all I have this evening.
Okay, we do have a listed item MetroNet update.
Yes, this is Matt again. I just wanted to provide everyone with an update on MetroNet. They have submitted three permits here at Public Works. The first one is to construct one of their fiber backbones, which runs on eighty six to seventieth and then on a hundredth street. They plan on beginning promptly after the first of the year to start construction or or bore and conduit for that fiber backbone. The second permit moves into the, what you see here on the screen, was the Newport Point Vista and Ashton Point neighborhood. And then the third permit is for Green Meadows North and the Augustine neighborhood. MetroNet's indicated that they'd like to start work second or third week of February in those areas. With that, MetroNet has began to send out letters and postcards to our residents and start their communications on their projects. And I believe they've even deployed some of the the yard darts. Janet has been working with MetroNet and has posted information on how residents can contact MetroNet if they have any questions about the construction process, and that is on the city's website. So what you're looking at here is is the fiber plan right in the middle is eighty sixth street. Then you've got Green Meadows North there off to the to the right of the screen and Augustine to the left. So I just wanted to want to provide a big update on on MetroNet and where they're at in their process.
Thank you, Matt. And Jim, related to that, we do have a public meeting coming up to discuss broadband.
Yes, the the work that Howard R. Green has been work doing on our behalf related to the broadband study. They are going to have their first public meeting on January thirteenth. And we'll make sure the council is aware of that, but that that is what the plan is. We did have a last week, we did have an update on where they've what they've accomplished so far and and what is planning to be discussed at the December or excuse me, the January thirteenth meeting. We did send a recording of that meeting out to all the council members. I hope you had an opportunity if you if to to listen to the recording and get the update on where we are with broadband study. That was a good conversation and and there's been a lot of progress and and a lot more progress that'll happen in the the next several weeks.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Anything else under city administrator staff comments, Jim?
I don't have anything. I don't know if anybody else has anything they would like to talk about this evening. Sounds like that might be it.
Okay, well, let's move to city council comments then. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Martin.
I will just put out there, thank you very much to Public Works on the great snow removal for that kind of surprise big snow we had. I I wasn't out and about after it, but I heard no complaints and hearing nothing usually means people are happy. So thank you very much.
Councilman Co.
I just wanted to thank Matt Greiner for taking some time Friday to meet with a constituent to talk about some of the work on fifty fourth and ninety third. Also, just wanted to John Schmitz on Parks and Rec on the earlier item about oh, the plantings along the trails. I think that's a great concept. I've I've had a couple of of folks contact with me about seeing whether that those types of plantings might be able to be done along the trail system in Cross Haven as well. So just wanted to pass that along is that's and there's some interest in that type of thing in in that part of the community as well. So that's it.
Councilman Sorica.
I have one comment of thanks for Matt Greiner and Public Works for responding to a constituent concern about dark roads, basically, along Northwest seventieth as you kind of pull out of the library. And his team worked on getting some reflectors installed, to which they were much appreciative for. And then final comment is just thanks to Dave Woolwarding for giving me a tour of the Ridge Crest Stormwater Project. I mean, it obviously is, you know, a neat project, seeing the diagrams and everything come up before us. But I did not realize just how large of an undertaking it was before getting there in person and seeing all the really great work that's been done there. So thanks, Dave.
Councilman Evans.
I just wanted to comment on the very, very nice and smooth transition on Merle Hay to get that open. And I know everybody around here really appreciates it.
Thank you. And one item just to add to that, we will be opening sixty second to the east of Merle Hay. Could be as early as the end of day tomorrow, but more likely be on Wednesday.
Awesome.
Councilman ready?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you for all the staff and City of Johnson and everybody for making this a great year. This has been a year of a unique year to say the least. It's been terrible in all terms of you had pandemic, you had several incidents with direct or straight line waves. This has been a unique year in every sense. So I just want to like thank everybody. In spite of all this, you did a good job to keep the city running efficient. And thank you again. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Councilman ready, it has been a challenging year, but you know, we've got, we've got a good team that surrounds us. They do an amazing job and, you know, we we pressed through it. So thanks to everybody for all of your good efforts this year. And with that, I just want to wish you all great holidays coming up. We've got a couple of weeks to just enjoy our families and our friends and and, you know, make the best of of the time that we can spend together. So best wishes and stay safe and we'll see you next year. Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Bye.